Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lundon area town council meeting for August 16, 2021. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Let's just have a moment of silence and some good thoughts for all of the Americans who are trying to get out of Aspianistan and trying to get home. Thank you. Okay. So, the first thing on my agenda tonight is I have public comment. So, we have assessing here tonight, right, under public comment?
We do, yes. Mr. Chairman, I have asked our town assessor, Steve Hamilton, if he would make a brief presentation regarding the revaluations that are, letters that are going to be going out to residents in the very near future and to just describe exactly what's happening.
So, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Hamilton is going to be talking about a number of things that have happened here in the community, including this real estate market, which is unprecedented in probably in our lifetime of what's moving around here in the residential arena and the changes in the valuations. And that we're going to be taking a proactive approach of communicating with the homeowners and with the business owners and letting them know what's coming in December versus just sending them a bill. That about covered it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. That was a great introduction. So, we are closing in on the point in time where we want to communicate to all of the taxpayers the results of our revaluation work this year. As the council has adopted an every-two-year revaluation schedule rather than waiting for the full five years. We've been working earnestly on this valuation project since the end of December. And so, right now, we're closing it on the end of our valuation, but we have some preliminary numbers to share a little bit of what you can expect in terms of the overall value of the community and maybe what the taxpayers might be able to anticipate when they receive a letter in a couple of weeks from us with their individual property values. Because as we've all been watching the real estate market, whether we're professionals or not, the values have been going up, and Lundon area is no exception. The total value of the town in the last two years, by our reckoning, has gone up by approximately 14%. And so, that's a pretty significant increase. If you multiply that out by a five-year period, if this kind of increase were to continue, then that would be a very significant increase at the end of the five-year period that you used to be under. So, this will provide for a more of a stepped change. And indeed, if these market values continue to rise, then it will be a step in that direction. But if there's a change in direction over the next two years, then those will be reflected shortly in 2023. So, not all of the classes of property will change in the same way, because that's the nature of real estate. Some classes of property will be very nearly the same as that increase. So, single-family property owners, overall, the increase will be about 14%. Condominiums, depending on the complex, will be in the range of 12% to 18%. Manufactured housing units can anticipate a larger increase than the rest of the housing stock, as the demand for regular housing has kind of shifted down to manufactured housing. And we see significant growth in overall value. However, it also includes changing out of manufactured housing units. So, a lot of the, excuse me, older manufactured housing units are being replaced with newer double-wide, and so that steps up the value increases as well. Apartment complexes have increased by about 20%, and that includes some growth in value as well. Commercial and industrial property has not increased in value or grown in value as much. The commercial properties have increased a median of 5% and industrial properties a median of 2%. And that's kind of, I think, intuitive. All of the growth in the residential property value has been about supply and demand. There's been a very short supply and, you know, an unbelievable amount of demand for the housing stock. And so, that's really where we see things changing in value significantly. Our ratio study preliminary results for the six months before April 1st shows us at about 94.8% of market value. When we include the sales from May, April and May, we're looking at about 93%. It goes down a little bit. Our coefficient of dispersion, which is the measurement that we are looking at a target of, you know, how well we did, is about eight, a little over eight, which is pretty good. The range should be between 5 and 20. And so, the lower end of the range, the better. Eight is a good number. When we send out notices, we're going to be making information available online for taxpayers to be able to research the sales of properties, because not everybody will be as knowledgeable about the recent sales of property that we have to rely on. And so, some of the tools that will be available to them is the Vision Online Sale Lookup Process, which there'll be a link to that database on our website. There'll be lists of sales that we've used that will be organized by style, by neighborhood, by use of the property, those kinds of distinctions. And the GIS system will be available to assist them to understand the properties that have sold. As I said, a notice is going to be mailed to every taxpayer. We're going to be sending them out to the mailing person probably the beginning of next week, so we think the 23rd or the 24th of August. It's going to take them about a week to turn around all the notices. So, people should be able to anticipate getting them at the very end of August and the first couple of days of September. We're going to be holding informal hearings, which is different than was done in 2019, where people will be able to call in to a number that is printed on that notice. They'll be able to schedule an appointment with me or one of the representatives from my company, who will sit down with taxpayers and help them to understand the process of revaluation and why the value might have changed on their property, and get some information if there has been an error in our understanding of their property description.
So, Steve, we're going to do all this before we send the tax bills out, so we don't have all the abatements.
Yep. Well, I mean...
We may have the abatements anyway, but this helps with the process.
It helps in two ways. It helps to reduce the number of abatements, but also, for us as valuers, this is the final check on the work that we've done. So, if we've made a mistake in a neighborhood or in a condo complex, we hope to hear that and be able to make those corrections before we send out the tax bills.
Terrific.
We'll be taking those appointments in person, and we'll be doing them over the telephone. So, if people are concerned about COVID-19 or their safety, they can do a phone-in interview with us. We'll be following up with a response after the hearing. And one thing that I did want to mention, and I'm sorry I've taken so much of your time, and I know how valuable it is...
This is probably the most important thing taxpayers should learn about, so...
I wanted to say a few words about something that we've heard filter back to the assessing department. We've undertaken a change in the valuation formula for condominium units. It used to be here that the valuation formula included a value in those condominium units for land as a component of the value. We've simplified the formula for valuing condominium units to focus on the unit itself and the features of the unit without creating some other value to attach to some land rights that every condominium unit owner possesses, but we don't want to value separately. We don't want to try and do that. That gets way too complicated. And so, we've simplified the formula. We're not taking anybody's land away from them. In fact, if land was described on their property record card previously, which it was for a lot of the duplexes and condex condominiums, we're not changing that. And so, the land will still be described there. It just won't be valued there. So, the value on the land will be zero. All of the value will be in the unit. That's the most consistent way to value condominiums. It's the way that it's done in almost all communities in the state with the exception of very few. So, I just wanted to say that upfront. When a condominium owner sees their property record card, they may be confused, because there may have been a land value associated with that property, but now there'll only be one value for it.
Are we going to continue with the form that we started using a few years ago, which breaks the tax rate down by percentage and where the money goes? Can that go out with the letter, too?
So, we don't want to get too complicated with the communication. We can certainly talk. Kevin and I have been reviewing what will be included with the letter. We can probably best describe that on a percentage basis, so that...
I know, I understand the rate will change based on the valuations and everything. I think the council has found that to be a tool that helps us so that people understand how much of $1 goes where, so they understand when they're looking at their bill, what they're paying for.
Yep.
We've found that to be helpful, and I see other towns are doing it as well.
And I'm happy to help to put that together and put that on the backside of the notice that we mail out.
All right. Questions for Steve? So, everything you just described, the percentages, all the way down to industrial and everything, that's going to go out in the letter as well?
So, no. I mean, the letter will be tuned to that property and the property owner. So, it will give the results of their value estimate. There will be a description of some of the big-picture pieces on the website, so that when you land on a page that describes the revaluation, some of that information will be available.
Okay. Any other questions from the council before I go to the public? Questions from the public? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Tim, 689 Harvey Road. You give the percentages like 18 or whatever it is for a family and anywhere from like 12 to 18 or 20 for apartment stuff. What's that overall change in income for the town on taxes collected?
So, that's a great question. The town, through the revaluation process, collects no more money. For, you report to the Department of Revenue Administration all of the money that has to be raised by the town to pay over to the school, for fire protection, police protection, for the administration of the town, for the county, and even a portion of the state education tax. All of that goes to the Department of Revenue. They take that amount of money that needs to be raised, and they divide it by the sum of all of the assessed value. And that calculates the tax rate. And so, if the spending were to all stay equal and the values go up, as with any fraction, the result will go down. So...
So, our total valuation of the town has increased. Do we know the total amount of valuation of the town has increased by X?
So, we don't know all of the pieces, because we're not completing the valuation of the utility property. So, we can tell you that the non-utility property has gone up by about 14% overall. The utility appraiser, we don't anticipate that we'll get results from that within the next few weeks, I don't think. Not typically. But, you know, there will be an impact on any changes on the utility valuation side.
Anything further for Steve? Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're in public comment, so if there's anyone who has any additional public comment for the council, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'll take a motion to move to public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Mr. Campo. You might as well just stay up here.
Yes, I'm up here for a little bit. This meeting is a lot of me. So, the first one we have is the American Rescue Plan Act, which is the local recovery funds that was passed through the federal government. We're anticipated to get $2.7 million, but the deadline for non-entitlement communities, which is such as ourselves, essentially it's ones that are not cities, is August 18th. If a community does not opt in, that money goes back into the regular pool, and I'm being told will be dispersed to those that did opt in, so there's an opportunity for potentially more. We've already received 1.3 of the 2.7.
So, what do you need from us?
So, the next section is a resolution to accept the unanticipated revenue.
Okay. Then we'll move to that next. We're in public hearing. Are there any questions from anyone in the public? Is there any questions from anyone in the council? Yes.
Justin, are there any strings to the money?
There are a lot of strings to the money. They're actually more clear with what you can't do with the money than what you can do. It seems to be a lot of, why don't you do it and we'll tell you if it's wrong. There are certain things that are very allowed, a lot of it being infrastructure and things of that nature where they'll allow us. But, as I stated, they're more clear with what you can't do.
So, you will remain a key figure in the governance of how that money is spent, so it's done correctly?
Yes, I've been working with Kevin on that to ensure that we're staying within the guidelines of the American Rescue Plan Act.
Yeah, and let me be clear. At a staff level, we are not going to spend $2.7 million before getting the council's approval to do such. So, any plans to spend any of this money will come before the council, before anything is done.
Good. That would be excellent. Okay. So, the other item I have under public comment is the unanticipated revenue from the Stanton Foundation. I see I have a resolution for that as well.
Yes. So, the police department applied to the Stanton Foundation in order to obtain another K-9 unit, and they were awarded the grant of $27,000, which covers the expenses for the dog. If you look in the budget, the second page of the resolution, it has the budget of what it's for, and it covers three years of expenses as well as the upfront costs of outfitting the cruiser and purchasing the dog itself.
Question?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Is this necessary? You already have one dog. No one... Is a second dog necessary? That's what I need to hear.
I've been told this is a very successful program we've run and that it is the desire to have a second dog.
So, how old is our current dog?
Captain Bernard? Three years old, I'm being told.
So, our current dog is three years old. Life of service of the dog is six or seven years, right? So, by the time we would be able to get another dog up and going, the other dog would be moving towards retirement. Does that sound about right?
Okay.
Okay. All right. It's a public hearing. Does anyone have a question about the Stanton Foundation? All right, seeing none, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, chairman? Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Hearing is closed. All right, Resolution 2021-2021-20. This is a resolution for acceptance of unanticipated revenue for the Stanton Foundation. Do we have any questions on this resolution?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Resolution is accepted. Resolution 2021-21. This is unanticipated revenue from the Ray Ingeniero donation?
Yes, so Ray Ingeniero is an individual that is going for their Eagle Scout badge, and in order to do so, they offered to assist in building a 9/11 memorial at Central Fire. He, in order to finish it, he had to purchase from Hepworth Memorial's a pedestal, two benches, and the engraving of the benches. He donated the funding for that to us, so we would be able to finalize the purchase and have it installed when we have the time and ability to. So, it becomes on our watch rather than when it's available. This will assist him in obtaining his Eagle Scout badge, I believe.
Any questions?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution 2021-21.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Resolution passes.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept Resolution 2021-22 as presented by the finance director earlier.
Any questions? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Resolution is accepted. Old business. No new old business. I have a motion to approve the minutes for July 19, 2021, as presented in our packet.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Chair abstaining. 4-0, 4-0, okay? That be good?
Yeah.
4-0, okay?
I said aye.
I just couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry.
4-0, okay, good. All right. Liaison reports.
The chairman, the PFOS committee that the council committed to in a resolution is nearing its conclusion with regard to an outgoing report to the council, and I suspect that report will be ready for you, for the council at our next meeting. I'll make sure it's emailed to you ahead of time.
Fantastic. Anyone else for liaison reports? Okay, town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of items this evening. One is, this is Old Home Day week. If you haven't gotten your shirt, it's on the back of your shirt.
Week. If you haven't gotten your shirt, it's on the back of your seat for this Saturday's parade. We have our final meeting of the Old Home Day Committee tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock, right here in the Moose Hill Council Chambers. A lot of events planned for this week. We have the senior dinner on Wednesday, followed by the concerts on the Common. We have the battle, First Annual Battle of the Bands, which will be taking place on the Common on Thursday night. Friday night, we have the first responders, Derry versus Lunandary softball game, followed by the concert with the Scott Spradling Band, and then the fireworks spectacular, which starts at 9 o'clock. Saturday, of course, is the Old Home Day Parade. We have the baby contest in the morning, and then the parade, and then the booths on the Common. There's going to be cornhole, the bear tent. There's, the historical society is doing the pig roast and some reenactments. Just going to be a day of fun and festivities, and then the boot scoot and boogie that evening. And then Sunday is the Day of Service, which is an ecumenical event with all of the different churches in town. So, a lot of events planned. This can all be found on the Old Home Day Facebook page or the town's website. If people want more information and details on any of those events. There's also going to be the First Annual Sunny Crest Apple Pie Eating Contest. First 16 participants are in. We're still looking for a few more, so if people want to sign up for that, they can do so, again, on the website. And then there's the annual strongman competition, where I'm told Jim Butler will be defending his title from two years ago. Anyone is welcome and willing to take on Jim to see...
Are you going to take me on, Jim?
I'm actually the announcer for the event, Jim. I, I'm not a participant in it. But hopefully, hopefully, we, hopefully, we find other people to step up and, and challenge you for how many times they can ring the bell. So, very exciting. Hopefully, the weather cooperates, but we're looking forward to getting Old Home Day back on track this year, and hope to see everybody out there. The other issue item I wanted to bring up this evening is I wanted to give you folks an update on Article 14, which was passed by the voters last March. To refresh your memory, Article 14, read as follows. It was to urge the New Hampshire General Court for transparent redistricting. Shall the town vote to urge the New Hampshire General Court, which is obligated to withdraw the maps of political districts within the state following the federal census, to ensure fair and effective representation of New Hampshire voters without gerrymandering, and to carry out the redistricting in a fair and transparent way through public meetings, not to favor any particular political party, to include communities of interest, and to minimize multi-seat districts. Further, if the town, if the article is approved by the voters, the record of the vote shall be transmitted by written notice from the town council or the town manager to Lunandary state legislators, informing them of the requests of their constituents within 30 days of the vote. And so, following the affirmative vote of that warrant article, a letter was transmitted to all of the House Representatives, as well as Senator Carson, on April 6, letting them know that the vote passed by a margin of 1449 to 550. In addition to the written letter that was sent, there was also an email transmission that went to each of the representatives and Senator Carson. Paul Skladurik, a member of the community, had requested that they acknowledge receipt of it, and I did receive an acknowledgement from Representatives Lundgren, Dolan, and McKinney, and also from Senator Carson. That's my update.
Okay. Lisa?
Just very briefly, I'm happy to report that we now have 16 class members for the next Leadership Lunandary Class, and it begins in September, on September 16.
Great. Okay. So, our next meeting right now is tentatively scheduled for August 30. If we don't have the August 30 meeting, then we're going to fall out to the 13th of September, and probably the 20th of September. So, I think we'll look and see how busy it's going to be for the 30th, and make a decision when we get closer to the meeting or whether the meeting is necessary or not. Otherwise, we'll come back on the 13th and probably the 20th, and we're going to start moving quickly into budget season. So, for, no later than the September meeting, we're going to have to appoint for the vacancy on the Budget Committee. And the other thing that happened last week is, is that, some of you may or may not be aware, there was a resignation on the school board. If the school board, in, in accordance with the school board charter and with state law, if the school board does not come to majority decision, then the appointment of the school board comes to the town council. So, just so you're aware, I don't foresee anything like that happening, but it's been brought to my attention by three or four community members, so I thought I would share it with all of you. Anything else tonight?
I just have a question for Kevin. Kevin, for the barbecue for Wednesday, it's supposed to have thunderstorms, and I know you'll probably move the barbecue inside, but at Wednesday's concert on the Commons, they said if it was raining, they weren't going to do it. So, I just to reiterate for people...
Yeah, that is my understanding. If, if it is raining on Wednesday evening, the concert will be canceled. However, the senior barbecue will still be held at the Matthew Thornton Cafeteria on Wednesday night. And similarly, on Thursday, if the, if it does rain for the Battle of the Bands, that will just be canceled in its entirety. It's not being moved indoors. And we do have a rain date for the fireworks in case it rains on Friday. The forecast is so iffy right now. It's talking about scattered thunderstorms, literally Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, but no prolonged rain, just scattered storms. So, play it all by ear.
Yeah, I just wanted people to know that there were rain dates.
Sure.
All right. So, for the council, there's some assessing paperwork going around that needs to be signed. Is there anything else tonight? Seeing nothing, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved, Chairman?
Second.
All those in favor, just come by by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're adjourned. See you in Old Home Day.